All right, counsel, sorry for the technical difficulty there. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, May 17, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
She was here.
I see her. Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Trine, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by about 7-0. Wow, it's nice to say that. Because we have seven members finally. The agenda is approved. Okay, next we'll have public comment. The public is welcome to attend City Council meetings in person at City Hall to give public comment or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. If you're giving written public comment, it will be accepted up until 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@lhachey@samamish.us and the city If you're giving verbal comment, you may provide up to three minutes of verbal public comment during the meeting by attending in person at City Hall or virtually through Zoom. If you're providing it through Zoom, please join the meeting by following the media accessibility at the top of the agenda. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if they wish to give comment. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you'll be given the ability to turn on your webcam if you desire. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. If you're physically here in City Hall giving comment, there are lights appear indicating when it's red, you are out of time. Okay. Got a list here. The first person, and we'll go with the folks that are in person here first, Nicholas Espinoza.
Do I have to push? Dear members of the city of Samamish, my wife Maria Sainz and I, Nicolás Espinoza, are Ecuadorian nationals, and we moved to the United States for college in California. After college, I accepted an internship at Pacific National Bank in Florida. My daughter Julia Espinoza was born with a rare health condition affecting her small intestine. Her doctors gave us the impossible choice of letting Julia die naturally or trying to save her life by surgically removing her small intestine. We let Julia decide, and although she nearly died, with her resilience, she chose to live. Together with the specialized care of Seattle Children's Hospital, Julia has found quality of life and is almost 10 years old. She is now eligible to receive a life-saving transplant at Seattle Children's Hospital. Because my wife and I are not U.S. citizens, however, she may never receive the transplant. Indeed, her doctors and specialists agree that if Julia is removed from the United States and deported to Ecuador, she will not survive. To cover the cost of my daughter transplant, I need to keep my job and its health insurance benefits. To do that, my wife and I must become U.S. permanent residents. Although we have resided in the United States without ever leaving for more than 11 years, we are not permanent residents. On the contrary, our immigration status is medical deferred action, which is a discretionary determination to defer a deportation of an individual as an act of the persecutorial discretion. What we need, we require the city of Samamish to request the office of Congresswoman Schreier, Senator Pat Mory, or Senator Mary Cantwell to take action and support U.S. Espinoza as follows. After consulting with many immigration attorneys, there appears to be only one way to solve this problem. U.S. Citizen Immigration Services, USCIS, has the authority under immigration laws to issue Form I 862 Notice to Appear, which is thereafter filed with immigration court to commence removal proceedings under Section 240 of the Immigration National Act. As such, immigration court, in removal proceedings, my wife and I will pursue cancellation of removal. Adjustments of Status, Section 122A BB of the U.S. Federal Code. The sections of the code allow the Attorney General and immigration judge to hear a case and adjust our status if we meet the following criteria. Be physically present in the U.S. for a continuous period of not less than 10 years. My wife and I have not left the U.S. since 2011. Be a person of good moral character during such period. As defined by the United States Citizen Immigration Services Policy Manual, good moral character is a character in which measures the standards of average citizens of the community in which the application resides. I can assure you that if we fit the description. We are law-abiding individuals that support our community by volunteering in Seattle Children's Hospital and Mary Bridge Hospital on a weekly basis. Have not convicted offenses under Sections 11828, 122782, or 122783 of the U.S. Title VIII Aliens of Nationality. My wife and I have never convicted of any offenses. Removal will result in exceptional, extremely unusual hardship to a child. This is the last one. Our daughter will die if we are removed from the USA. Please help my family, please help my daughter, please help a U.S. citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Next I have Maria Espinoza.
I can talk about Julia's medical condition for hours and not dropping a tear, but whenever I have to talk about our immigration situation, I get so frustrated that this is me. I'm so grateful with the U.S. because our daughters were born here and for all the opportunities the country has provided to us. First, as students, and then opening the doors for work. Also, for the bright minds, loving and caring people and medical persons that have provided Julia a fantastic quality of life during these past 10 years. We have truly been blessed to have doctors, nurses, and medical specialists that have been invaluable, all due to advancements and research in the country's medical system. This situation has bonded us more as a family. We couldn't ask for a better place to live or Julia to be treated. We're few of the lucky ones. What makes me feel indignant and sad is that a visa is meant to help us, but it feels like punishment. It feels like we're trapped in limbo. We haven't been able to visit home country for 10 years. Close family members have passed away, our parents are getting older, siblings are having babies, and the list goes on and on. I feel that in a way, access to my home country has been taken away. I would love to focus my energy on my family, Julia, and not have to deal with immigration matter. It makes no sense. It shouldn't be this hard. We came to help build a better society, work hard and pay taxes. It has been 10 years of lawyers, 10 years of reinventing how to survive, and we're on the brink of not being allowed to work just because of a visa one more time. I want to wake up one of these days and know I can dedicate myself 100% to my family and not on an issue that keeps me up awake at night. Julia is now on the transplant list. Please allow her the opportunity to get her transplant and continue to thrive. She deserves that opportunity. She is a U.S. citizen, and her child and her grandchildren and so on and so forth will be as well. One child that will have a significant impact in this beautiful country, let her become advocate of kindness, love, courage, and example for other children with the same situation. We need to stay in the U.S. with her. We need stability and we need freedom. Don't keep waiting until it's too late. Please, find it in your heart and support us. We're begging you for your support and the opportunity to live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Espinoza. I have your contact information here, but I will ask our city manager if maybe you want to step to the back if you have a moment and just speak with them and see if there's something that we might be able to assist them with. Okay, next I have Debbie Stenham.
Stenham.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm a Samamish resident and friend of the Espinozas, but most importantly, a voice for Julia. It's hard for this family to be heard above a pandemic, a war, a recession, and the list just goes on and on. Now that you've heard their story, we need your help to make Julia's case relevant in Washington, D.C. We have three requests. Will you write to Dr. Kim Schreier? Will you write to Patty Murray? Will you write to Maria Cantwell? The Espinozas have already contacted them. I've contacted them, but we need the voice of all of you to help them. I ask you, when did it ever become okay to deport critically ill U.S. citizen children? As a country, we're better than that. With your help, we can change that. Thank you for your time, and thank you on behalf of Julia.
Thank you, Ms. Stenham. Of note, I will actually be seeing Kim Schreier next week in D.C., so I will have an opportunity to speak to her there.
Can we forward you their change.org information?
Yes, you can send it to our city email address.
Okay.
Citycouncil@samamish.us.
Okay, thank you.
Next I have Allison Olson.
Good evening. I'm a teacher locally here at the Montessori School next door at Arbor Montessori and have worked with the Espinozas for years. And I'm here to represent the voices of our children, the voices of our future, who know and love Julia and hold her dear in their hearts. Dear Julia, you are one of the best mentors when I was in kindergarten. I hope your dad gets his work visa extended so you can stay in the U.S. Good luck in D.C. I'm thinking of you. Dear Julia, my name is Ahmed. I want to let you know that you are so brave, so strong, so inspiring to children around the world, including me. You are not alone, and I appreciate you. You've got this. Dear Julia, you can do it. Keep on trying. Dear Julia, I hope the government changes its laws and you and I can be together, and I hope you will be fine. Dear Julia, you are my best friend in Hawthorne, and I hope your dad gets his work visa extended so you can stay in the U.S. Good luck in D.C. I'm thinking of you, and I hope you feel better. Dear Julia, I hope you feel better. We all think about you, and I support you, Julia. We all want you to stay, so we do the best we can to support you. We all have your back, Julia. You can count on us always. We all know that you always stay strong, Julia. No matter what comes your way, you always stay strong. We are here to support you. Dear Julia, I hope you're doing okay. You are loving and strong. Good luck in D.C. Julia, you are a great student, and I am sorry to hear about how you're feeling, but I hope that you get better. Just keep learning. Fight through this health condition. Help yourself as much as you can. Let your family care. Dear Julia, I hope you get better soon, and I really want your parents to get their citizenship. Good luck at D.C. Dear Julia, I believe that you will be able to pass this and that you will be so proud, and I am proud that you have made it so far. I think you remember me. I wish you a wonderful morning, and I hope you will have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to give public comment? Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone remote that would like to give public comment?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment. I see three, four hands raised. I will transfer them in the order that they appear. Mary Victor.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish over two decades. I wanted to speak to the Lewis Thompson Tight Line and nonmotorized improvements. I hope that you will select the preferred alternative as number four. The main reason is that the drainage really needs to get done. It's flooding over into Zachary's Creek. It's causing safety issues, and that just needs to get done in the ditch area. I believe the pipes can get put in, and instead of just filling the ditch in with dirt, you can put a sidewalk on top of it. So the sidewalk needs to go on just one side, on the north side, which is a downhill side, and it needs to be six feet. The other day, I was walking on Inglewood Hill Road, which is a project that was done very similar to this and completed in 2016, and it's been very successful, and I'm not aware of any complaints. And on Waste Collection Day, when Republic Services was going around, everybody had their cans out. It was right at the edge of the curb, and there was a person walking with a person who was in a motorized wheelchair. And even with the refuse containers on the sidewalk, the wheelchair person was able to negotiate going up and down past that. So that's the reason that you need the six-inch sidewalk. The other reason the six-inch sidewalk helps is in the wintertime or during slick times or just even in dry times, there's enough curves on the road that if you have a curb and gutter there, having the sidewalk, the curb will be like a pumper for the cars or the trucks so that they will hit it instead of end up in the ditch. Because when people end up in the ditch, they try to get out. If it's snowing and icy, it's very easy for the doors to get hit or the people to get hit. Those have happened multiple times. I believe even some council members have seen that happen, particularly after the last turn on the road. So it's really important to keep cars on. The other thing is, Inglewood is a 10% slope. Inglewood, or Lewis Thompson's, is only an 8% slope, but Lewis Thompson has what I believe would be tighter curves. So I think the speed should be set according to the design of the road. And I know from listening to Mr. Victor Salman, who is a consultant for the city for traffic, that if you reduce speed limits to like 25 instead of 35, I think it also changes the expense and the amount of things you need to do in fixing a road. The other thing that's really needed is there are a lot of bicycles that ride up the right shoulder, which is on the south side, the uphill lane, and it works very effectively. There's a few places it's a little bit narrow, so those just need to be fixed. I believe that can totally be done. And then we do need to have that downhill bike lane, because while planter strips would be great, just with the landslide hazard area and the steep curves, I honestly don't believe that you have the room for it. But if you do put the sidewalk right on top of the drainage, which is option four, that gives you this six feet there, and then you probably have an extra foot that can be added, because what you want is about a five-foot bike lane going down, which is exactly what Inglewood has. And again, like I said, that's been very successful and hasn't had problems. So I hope that you'll do that. You're helping me fish. You're helping the overflow to Zachary's Creek. You're helping cure safety problems. You're providing pedestrian connectivity, which matches with the parks plan. This project has been a long time in making. We hope you'll support it all the way from the Parkway all the way up to Two-Tenth Place. And you actually need to go above that to the white mailbox across from Montage. Otherwise, you will not be able to capture the water, and the drainage needs to be modeled accurately and appropriately so it is correctly done. So the size of it.
Ms. Victor, I do need you to wrap up.
Yep, so thank you very much, and I hope that you will look for, realize that everybody should do alternative work. Thanks.
Thank you. While the clerk is promoting our next panelist, Councilmember Stewart, your hand is on an orange dot, so it's very hard to see. Maybe you can just pivot your better, and we can't hear you. So we don't have any audio on your end. So maybe we can work on that while she pulls up the next public commenter.
You're muted.
There we go. Good evening, counsel. My name is Stephanie Rudat. I'm offering public comment regarding Agenda Item 17 this evening. I only have three minutes to speak, so this is a summary of a brief statement I will be emailing each one of you shortly. The investigation of my dad was initiated by Mayor Mauchow and former councilmember Tom Odell after being approached by a resident who was their close friend, all of whom were chomping at the bit to crucify us. They did so by diving straight into spending taxpayer dollars on a tainted investigation. With no apparent concern of consequence, the council majority's goal justified their nefarious means, and facts highlighting how that investigation was corrupted are as follows. One, governmental investigations are expected to be unbiased and objective. This was not. Number two, the former Samamish city attorney claimed that there was no foundation to support an investigation. Number three, council accepted a complaint by a resident and then launched an investigation with documents that were never substantiated nor vetted. Number four, evidentiary material offered by myself and my dad was refused by the investigator, helping to keep the process absolutely biased and unobjective. I was refused, sorry, number five, I was refused equal standing with the resident complainant. His information was accepted, mine was not, resulting in the city's defamation of me. Number six, council was made aware of the fact that a plethora of hard evidence shows that I was intimately engaged with some council members and that the investigator rejected my offer of critical information. This includes Mayor Mauchow. Okay? Number seven, council hired an intermediary attorney without a public vote violating OPMA to handle the management of the investigation between the city and the investigator. Public records show that former councilmember Odell and the resident complainant circumvented that lawyer and engaged with the investigator directly, which is corrupt. The investigator, number eight, did not follow standard protocols of government investigations, including recording of interviews, did not allow for interviews to be recorded by the other party nor their attorney, and did not allow for a court reporter to be present when requested. Number nine, the resident complainant and I had covered the exact topics discussed in our text at length with Mayor Mauchow, as well as former councilmember Gamblin, who refused to be interviewed in the investigation. This investigation wasn't even over content that posed a threat to our city, which is very important to note. Number 10, I overheard some parts of conversations my dad had. That isn't a secret, but none of it was material and proven consequential to the city thus far. There is no evidence of the city experiencing loss because my dad took after-hours work calls in my home during COVID lockdowns when he was the only person in my family's pod. I overheard things no different than a spouse would during an unprecedented pandemic causing people to work from home and overextended hours, none of which was consequential. Number 11, my WhatsApp records with Mayor Mauchow and others show that we communicated about city business quite extensively. Those were rejected by your investigator. Okay? But public records requests are also.
Ms. Rudat, I'm sorry, I was just alerted that you're 30 seconds over. I need you to wrap up.
Okay, wrapping up. Watching my community graze on speculation around the investigation.
Ms. Rudat, I'm sorry, you need to wrap up now. You've gotten 49 seconds.
And that's on you, Mayor Mauchow, and I'll be sending all of this to your council. Thank you.
I'll now promote the next caller. Paul Stickney.
Good evening, City Council, Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'm going to be chatting a bit, not about the email I sent today of EI and IE, but some information in support of it. You know, emotions and ideology have run very strong on growth for 22 years. You see it everywhere. Time to temper that with information and tempered emotions. Here comes my short comment. I'd like to talk about an executive summary on solutions and ailments for housing growth in Samamish, which is the core issue. Relative to needs of all those working in our community over time and for seven generations, simply, our internal housing supplies are way out of balance. Too many large homes, not near enough, different diverse and smaller homes for all economic levels and demographic groups. A really good solution is to modestly optimize housing supplies. To lessen future amounts of large single-family homes, increase current and future amounts of different diverse and smaller housing options for all economic and demographic groups, enable additional community enrichments far greater for residents and our city than for development interests, and that's important. Think about our local housing supply assets as a pizza. Since the city incorporated, our city has shrunk the size of our housing asset significantly, mostly through development regulations. However, if you open the box, you'd be surprised to see that many slices of the pizza are missing. That's the case with our housing supplies. We've shrunk our capacity over 22 years, but we've never filled in the different types of housing that our community needs. In order to get that right optimally, we need data plus opinions. That's IE. Uniquely appropriate local housing needs analysis gaps for every single economic and demographic group clear up to 500% AMI and higher. Informed statistically valid surveys contrast over 40 consequence topics, and most important of all, enlightened resident inputs with IE. Our Samamish Comprehensive Plan vision statement calls to meet housing affordability through balanced, sustainable housing. The way to get balanced, sustainable housing is to alleviate housing misdevelopment in our community. This will enable housing for a generational perspective for those that live and work in our community, enable holistic enrichments with appropriate benefits now and for future generations to improve livability, lifestyles, and legacies. Summing up, alleviate imbalances, add assets, appropriate benefits. City and residents get far more benefit than do development regulations. Why? Optimal growth and prosperity to add enrichments holistically now and for posterity.
Mr. Stickney, sorry. I'm used to the alert.
Appreciate the extra couple seconds.
Thank you.
I'll now promote the final commenter. David Osmer.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Osmer. I live right adjacent to you in Issaquah, but I live very close to Laughing Jacobs Creek. And so I'm making a very quick comment tonight to urge you to support the adoption of the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin Plan, because our neighborhood would be severely impacted by any significant increases in the volume of stormwater that would flow down that creek. And I think the basin plan will effectively address those issues, and I urge your support of consent agenda number five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did not see any further hands raised.
Thank you. All right, we will close public comment. Next, council has an executive session. This is relative to potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101i. And I approximate 20 minutes. If we need to extend, we'll come back out. So we'll be back. Counsel, I've got 7:20, so we're going to go ahead and get started again here. I entertain a motion for approval of consent.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the consent count is approved. We have an echo if somebody else's got their mic on. Okay. So next, we have presentations and proclamations. First, we have a presentation. This is on Bright Action App demonstration from the League of Women Voters. And I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Gordon from the League of Women Voters.
Great. Good to see you all. Thank you for giving me some time tonight. This is not really an app. In fact, when I came with Mike today, we were discussing the fact why they call it an app. I don't know. You don't install it. It's not something that takes up any space on your computer. It's a website. But it's a website that offers the answer to the question when you're all having get-togethers with your friends or, you know, family, and climate comes up. And they say, well, I know it's a thing. I just don't know what to do. What can I do? I'm one person. Well, there's an answer for that.
Madam Mayor, you can barely hear.
Is the mic on? Yeah, mic's on.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'm just being too quiet, which doesn't usually apply to me normally. I hear chuckling. See, I've got to get you guys out of the way here. Wow. There we go. This was up here earlier. There we go. This is a website built by people who are just as concerned about the environment as we are. This is why I probably should have used my stick, Mike. All this stuff that have already been in here. There we go. This is me. This is our house. Okay, so just a brief overview of what its purpose is. You still can't hear? How about if I talk out here?
No, no, back to the mic. Yeah.
I can hear it. I'm listening to it on the internet. It's coming through just fine.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, so does any of the stuff that's on the top of my screen show on yours? No, it doesn't. Okay, so this is the homepage. And this is my house. And this is relatively new, so my numbers are relatively small. But you know, I don't intend for them to stay small. So the whole point of this is people don't have any idea how to impact climate as a singular person in a house or an apartment or a member of a family. And this gives you a way to do that because it's nothing but a tool to select things that'll apply to your home that impacts your carbon footprint. So this, for instance, my progress is very minimal. It's only $16, $70, $22 and $40 a year. But the point is I have lots of things I can do if I want. So I'm going to come over here and show you the gold. The rest of it is something that you would play around with if you decide it, if our community decides to adopt it. The gold is the actions. Now, every one of these categories has multiple things that can be done in your home to minimize your carbon footprint. And most of the time you're going, I don't know where to start. So you can pick a category. And let's try. Let's just start with the beginning. So be energy smart. That's category. Now, these are things I've chosen. So you can see there's one that says done. I open and close my blinds. That's how simple some of this stuff is. Install a smart lighting control. We don't do that. Install smart power strips. Line dry clothes. All very easy things. You can place AC filters. Switch to LEDs. Turn stuff off. You'd be amazed at how many people do this one right away. Turn stuff off. You check the things that you would like to do. Home energy. Okay, that is one category. Here's an interesting one, of course, shift or ride. Now, these are bigger. Offset your air travel. Drive wisely. Combine less trips. So the app kind of also helps to keep you honest because if I were to choose, I said I was going to buy an electric fuel. I have a hybrid. My husband wants to trade in his all fossil fuel for an electric vehicle. So I chose buy an electric vehicle. Then you get a little screen that says, okay, when are you going to do this? So you put in when your projected date that you might buy the electric vehicle. So we put in by the end of that month. So the month goes on. I've only been playing with this since about February, March, when it first came up. So sure enough, at the end of the month, I get a little reminder, did you buy your car yet? Well, no, we didn't buy the car yet. Now, it also plugs into your energy usage by your profile. And I'll show you that part too because I think this is very slick. The gentleman who was part of the people who built the app, one of his sales things is, don't bother with this. If you don't want to bother taking the time to fill this out, don't. But I think this is important because this shows, now this is my household. This shows how many people live there. What kind of house do you have? Do you rent? It even has options for renters because not everybody has their own home here, but they still are concerned about the climate. Talk about kitchen and laundry and so on and so forth. These are the things that we have. We have an electric oven, but we also have a gas dryer. And no, we don't have a dryer. And there are things in here you can be completely honest with because it's not going anywhere. This is just for your profile. So that's really, without going into the weeds with all the different categories. Here's another category hanging out at home. Because this could go on for half an hour, and I know you don't want to spend that kind of time on it. So are there any questions that I can answer about? No, here's some more things you can choose. Are there any questions I can answer about why do I need this? It's just a tool.
Sure, we have a couple of council members have a few questions. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, this is awesome. When you came in on your dashboard there, there were a bunch of numbers. Would you be able to share with us, you know, kind of what those numbers mean?
And are there target numbers we would, you know, want to get to as a household?
Your target numbers, it depends on the target you're comparing yourself to. So let's go back to my home, my dashboard. So for instance, based on the things that I chose when I started using it, the things that I chose gave me, so let's see if I can show you some of them. I guess that would be a good idea. Well, no.
Like, could you even tell us, like, what do the points mean?
The total points for the type of action that you pick has, like, if it's just something simple, like I said, I do the one where it says, open and shut your blinds. The points for that would be smaller because that's not a huge effort. If you reduced your air travel, that's a big effort. So your points would be more, but they don't change daily. And I noticed that for, I wrote these numbers on my utility bill for the first couple of months when I started doing it, thinking I was going to start seeing the numbers grow up so I could win, you know, because that's what we're all used to is you get your points, you win something. But really, it's a long-term solution for a long-term problem. And the only time I saw a complete change in a number was here when I added some actions. And when I added actions, at some point over time, because it's following my electric patterns, the points won't change, but your savings will. And here, here's my tons of CO2.
That's great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And do you have any recommendations for the public? Like, how much do we want to try to reduce? Like, should everybody have a goal that, like, every three months, we want to try to reduce by another certain percentage so we can kind of give people some guidelines on what they want to try to target?
Well, that's kind of up to you because that's where there is no pressure. If we have, the county has contracted to have, I don't know how much of this you want me to make, to throw out there, but there's going to be a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for all the cities in King County. Each city will find out where their target problem is. Okay, so if you, as a city, you get your greenhouse gas report and it shows that your problem area is buildings, then you want to get people to do things in their homes or in your office buildings. If it shows that traffic and transportation is your issue, then you might focus on getting more buses. Not that we have buses that can take us downtown up here, but you get my point. You can get buses, you can improve your transportation, and a lot will come clear when you get that inventory. And that's hopefully coming at the end of this month and the first part of June, we're hoping. So that part-
Well, this is great. Thank you.
Well, is it making sense?
Oh, it definitely makes sense. And I, you know, I think a lot of us, you know, lots of people have their fitness watches. I think we are a society that's driven by our numbers. So I think giving people these kinds of dashboards and we can, you know, maybe get everybody on and get everybody trying and have friendly little competitions to make the world a greener place, so to speak.
Oh, great. I like to hear your, you're welcome. And I like hearing the competition because that brings me to another point. Up here, you get a chance, if you want, to share your progress. Now, I do not share, and that's over here. If you'll notice, there are people who have joined the social media part. A lot of people love doing this, and they like to tell you what they've done. Here's a family that they've all decided to ride their bikes to and from school. Channel transit, someone's got a big thing on transit. And I'm going to see if I can show you if there's time. Is there still time? Is there still time? I think it was here. This is Seattle. That's the number of people there. These are the things they've done. Small things, adjust the thermostat. I think it's region.
So is it okay if we have another council member who wants to ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Wonderful. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask quickly why the League of Women Voters was involved in this. I mean, clearly, it's gamification of trying to change behavior. Makes perfect sense, very straightforward, but why are you guys involved?
Because it's one of our missions as, just as in, the League of Women Voters was started, of course, for voter registration, and that's basically what the intent and the purpose is. But I think that we're drawn to any kind of civic engagement that can improve communities. And I don't know how many grassroots organizations are as old and as established as League of Women Voters. I think that helps us. It also helps that our reputation has remained relatively solid through, I think we had our 100th year anniversary this year. So I think our reputation has stayed solid, and so people trust us. There are usually members of communities who live in the community. I live here in Sammamish. I retired from Discovery Elementary in 18. My kids both went to school in Isqwa School. So those are the kinds of grassroots things that are important because you live in it and you want it to do well.
Well, I hope it's successful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I hope it is too because I think everybody will feel better when they think they can do something about it. I think you leave this, even though there's nothing tangible yet that you can see, well, there's 250 households in this region that are doing this so far. And here's a good example of, this is very popular with churches, probably because they have congregations that they all worship together and they're all gathered together. So it's new, but it's really growing pretty fast.
Councilmember Lamb.
This is pretty exciting. I'd like to see this show up on our city email and city newsletter, just communication to our residents that they can join this.
You think it would be something you would like to adopt? Okay, if you decide that that's the case, the way this works is there's no purchasing involved. The time that you purchase it is if you wanted the data. So what would happen is you're going to find out your greenhouse gas inventory, and then you'll have a direction to go. And if you want to use this tool to encourage your, the community members to go in that direction, I think that's where the beauty of it lies for Sammamish. But you wouldn't pay for anything unless you wanted the data for yourselves. And at that point, you would buy the program itself, and the website would be something that, a piece of it that you would get the data.
Is that the city purchasing or the individual household purchasing?
The city. It's sold by population. So I think we were quoted, and this is just a rough estimate, say a population of, say, 60,000 was going to be roughly $5,000 a year.
Okay.
And that's just a guess. So don't quote me on that.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else I can do before?
No, thank you so much. Oh, Councilmember Miranda, do you have a question?
I did. So I'm thinking competition. So I'm thinking like this little wager, you know, Issaquah City Council, Sammamish City Council. Just for fun. So is that easy to set up on here?
You're talking about the social media piece?
Yeah.
Oh, I think it would be really big up here. I haven't set one up, but I think if you want to, let's see. Let's see what it says. Oh, no, that just says I'm sharing.
But it is possible off of this. We could set-
Yeah. Yes, you don't have to buy it to be able to share it.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me talk. Oh, there's some hands up that all the questions get answered?
Yeah, I think, except for we have Councilmember Stewart, who just put her hand back up again. So Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would love it if we could, you know, maybe get consensus to, as Councilmember Lamb indicated, to direct the city manager to get this out to the public and even on the website. And also, maybe we could get some staff to investigate the purchasing of it and what additional data that might entail, if that would be helpful for us. So I would love to see if we could, would I need to make a motion to direct the city manager to do that?
He would.
Okay, well, then I move that we direct the city manager to have staff investigate what a program like this would provide for us and to come back with a recommendation on if they feel it would be helpful for our city or what benefits it may provide so the council can decide if it would be worth purchasing it.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Hey, thanks for giving me the time. I'll leave that for-
Next, we have a proclamation for National Police Week, and I'm happy to see we have several of our officers in the back here. Thank you. Thank you. So if council doesn't mind, I'd like to read this one. So this is for National Police Week for May 11 through the 17th, 2022. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Sammamish Police Department. Since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and the sacrifice of all the officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2022. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which was observed this year on May 11 through the 17th. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Sammamish City Council observed May 11 through the 17th, 2022, as National Police Week in the city of Sammamish and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you to all of you. Much appreciated. We now have another proclamation.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could, I believe that our staff would like to get a photo of council with
Absolutely. Police officers.
Our police staff. So if they could come forward and council, if you would mind taking a quick break and standing up and posing for the photo.
Scott, you should take a laptop over so I can be in the picture. I was just kidding. Just kidding. Well, thank you, Scott. I was really just kidding, but I appreciate that. Did you ever see that? What was that show? I think it was called Bizarre Bark. It was like a kid's show, and they had the guy on the laptop, and it was like on a robot, and it would roll around.
Okay, council, I'm looking for a volunteer to read the proclamation for Safe Boating and Paddling Week.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lamb.
Proclamation for Safe Boating and Paddling Week, May 21 through the 27th, 2022. Whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US, with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error and poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas the city of Sammamish is adjacent to Lake Sammamish and encompasses numerous other waterways. And whereas a large number of Sammamish residents of all ages engage in recreational boating. And whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now, therefore, the mayor of Sammamish, on behalf of the Sammamish City Council, do hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27th, 2022 to be Safe Boating and Paddling Week and encourage all Sammamish residents to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Here next item is the appointment of two members to the Sammamish Planning Commission. And I'm not sure who I'm turning this over to. If it's just us, up to us. Oh, Mike.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. I'll take a first stab at this. This is a follow up from two weeks ago, or actually, it was only a week. God, it was only a week. It was only a week ago where we council was able to make one appointment, but we have one seat that is still open. And we had two candidates that were unable to attend the meeting that evening to be interviewed. So what we have set up for you momentarily, that Lita is pulling up, is to do the two follow up interviews, and then you all will have the opportunity to choose from the six remaining candidates for the one open seat. Once that happens, then council will need to actually move the resolution with the names in it for passage. So with that, I will turn it over. I believe Lita has the process up on the screen for all of you and the candidates. And then, Lita, do we have the candidates ready to go to be interviewed?
Just one update. We had one of the candidates notify us right before the meeting, so we only have Mr. Hefner to interview tonight, and he is on the Zoom. So that's why there are now five on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So with that, Mayor, I think I will turn it back over to you for the interview process.
Perfect. So while he's being promoted as panelist, I do not have the questions. Wonderful, thank you. I'll let you ask them, since there's only one candidate to interview.
Hello, Jake, how are you?
Oh, there we go.
Great, we can hear you. All right, so first question. What specific work-life experience will you bring to the planning commission that sets you apart from other qualified applicants?
My experience with major corporations around the world and my ability to work with a team to find the best possible outcome for whatever we're looking into for that day or for that meeting.
Great, and I failed to allow you to introduce yourself first, so if you'd like to do that second, I would love to hear that.
So my name is Jake Hefner. I live in Sammamish, just across the street from City Hall, next to Skyline. I've got three young boys. I coached Sammamish Little League in the spring. I'm a very, you know, active member in the community. I volunteer at my local church, volunteer at the Seattle Humane Society, and I just like to, you know, do as much as I can and within my ability to help other people. And I think this is a great avenue for me to get started in local politics.
Thank you. Approximately, how often have you attended meetings for the planning commission?
So I have never attended one, but I watched some taped episodes. And, you know, there was some interest in what was going on with the way that they were implementing things and passing laws and stuff. And I was seemed very interested in providing my insight into those meetings.
Great. And then the last standard question, what topics would you like to see the planning commission work on during your tenure, if you are appointed?
I like parks and bus access. Those are the two things that I don't know if they're part of the planning commission, but the park system here with my children, it is there's swamps and the playgrounds are old. And then it doesn't seem like we have great bus access to a lot of the areas in the city of Sammamish. So those are two things that I'd like to look into.
Great, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to ask an individual question?
Yeah, thank you. So now on to like more personalized questions. So Jake, I know you've kind of been in like service industry and have like a pretty good grasp of like, you know, kind of a different dynamic than I think kind of what we have on the planning commission now. So I'm curious, you know, what kind of, you know, with that background and, you know, I know you've done communication and public interest, what would you think that you could bring that's something like a different dynamic or a different background or different information? Like, what specifically do you think that you could bring?
I think I could bring just a different type of energy to the commission and a different insight and just a different ear to listen to. And with my experience from just graduating recently from the University of Washington, but still being like not a 20-year-old student, I get that dynamic of, you know, a fresh college grad, but with a bunch of work experience. So I still have that ability to work with pretty much anyone and also bring, you know, a fresh perspective.
Councilmember Trine.
So Jake, when you when you talk about parks, what do you specifically mean? Because the Parks Department does or the Parks Commission is is one of our boards as well. So when you talk about parks, how do you how do you see that the planning commission working on on a parks project?
I think just like the areas that the parks are in are you can't really even walk in some of them. The swamps are so bad. And I mean, I know we've had a lot of rain this year, but even in the summertime, it's it seems like things are getting worse and not better. So I just think working in the the planning commission, maybe we could work with the Parks Department in rectifying those areas and, you know, trying to find a common solution for everything.
Sounds like stormwater, but just going to throw that out there. Thanks.
Councilmember Howe.
Thank you. Jake, I was going to ask about, I know you've had trouble making it to the to the meeting before because you had a work conflict. Do you think that work could be problematic for you in terms of being able to attend the planning commission meetings? Or do you think you can have more control over your schedule?
I just started recently at my where I'm working at now, and so my schedule is kind of all over the place. But I think in time, it'll flatten out and I'll have a typical Monday through Friday, nine to five schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't missed a baseball game all year. I've been to all my baseball games, so.
Well, that is critical, so thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lamb.
Hi, Jake. My question is, what does a sustainable future for our community look like to you?
A sustainable future for our community? I when I hear those words, I think of a community and people working together for the best possible outcome and having everyone working in as cohesive instead of, you know, working through conflicts of interest and conflicts of, you know, economic issues, but coming together as a community in an area where you live to get the best possible outcome for everybody regardless of those situations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
Question I had is, what do you see as the number one struggle that you see the city having to overcome over the next five years?
I mean, the housing costs and the housing market and the affordability for everyday families to live here and thrive here and grow here. It's I think it's going to be damaging to the community because if you have a family of three children, I mean, your gross income is going to have to be astronomical to even survive in the area. So housing costs, I think, would be a big one to try to get under control.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks, Jake, for being here and glad you could make those baseball games. Hope they haven't been too wet this year. I I grew up on the East Coast, and when I my first baseball season, I didn't know that hand warmers and blankets were a necessary equipment for that. One of the questions I've you mentioned that you had watched a couple of planning commission meetings. Do you happen to know, you know, kind of what the current, you know, what the planning commission is currently working on?
There were a lot of issues. I know that, as the gentleman was saying earlier, the stormwater issue was one that I was listening to. And then those are the only ones I can that one I can really remember. But I I noticed that they go through a lot of topics pretty quickly, and they're pretty efficient in what they're doing. So I was impressed with that. But specific topics, I didn't, I should have written some down, but I didn't make notes on those.
No worries. Thanks, Jake.
All right, Jake, I'm going to close this out here. Thanks so much for carving out some time. We really do appreciate it. I'm curious if you can tell me what you know about the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan for?
The city of Sammamish.
Oh, I have no idea, but I'm dying to learn.
Fair enough. Okay, I think that wraps us up, Jake. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for having me, council members, and good luck out there and stay safe.
Thank you. You as well. All right, council. I turned it over to you. Councilmember Lamb.
I'd like to motion to appoint Roisin O'Farrell to Planning Commission for the position number five, term ending January 31, 2025.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion, Councilmember Lamb?
I think we've had some really great applicants. I think Roisin has the experience and the most recent experience, and I think she'd be a great addition.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Nay. I'm not sure I know who the ayes and the nays were. Councilmember Trine, how did you vote?
Aye.
Okay, so I think we have a five two. So I'll go ahead and just make that final motion on this. So this, I move that we appoint Carrie Bosworth, position number one, whose term expires January 31, 2024, and Roisin O'Farrell to position number five, term expires January 31, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of six one, we have appointed Carrie Bosworth and Roisin O'Farrell to our planning commission. All right, council, our next item is repealing Resolution R. 2022-938 and adopting a new 2022 master fee schedule. I think that's David Pyle. Yep, he's coming up here.
Great, good evening, council. Sorry that took a minute. You went through the planning commission appointments pretty quickly, so I appreciate that. While I'm being promoted to panelist and my counterparts in DCD are being promoted, I will go ahead and introduce the topic. Tonight, we have with us Sarah Astiri from Department of Community Development, Kelly Hildy from the Department of Community Development, and myself. And we are here to present to you some changes to the city's fee schedule. If you recall, last December, we had If you recall, last December, we had some fairly robust discussions around fee recovery and how we subsidize certain applications, et cetera. We've since made some adjustments to account for changes in operating costs and also some reconsiderations based on some feedback from legal. Staff will be presenting that to you tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Kelly and Sarah for a presentation, and we will be available for a question and answer as needed.
Thank you, David. Good evening, City Council. My name is Sarah Estery, management analyst to the Department of Community Development. I'm here tonight to present the proposed updates to the adopted fee schedule. Tonight, we will going over the proposed updates to the current 2022 fee schedule. This includes the 2022 COLA, which staff noted in the, at the December 14th, 2025 City Council meeting when the initial development fee update was done. So you will see these slide increases throughout most of exhibit number two. Also, exhibit number two includes a number of updates that the staff has identified during the implementation of the new fee schedule. We are going to start tonight's presentation by looking at correction and clarifications, beginning with some changes to fee types. This is a change to specific services. In most cases, this is adjusting a flat fee to a base fee to better capture the reviewers' time on reviewers that tends to vary widely by the type of projects. In another few cases, it is shifting from the actual cost to either a flat fee or deposits. We are also proposing several changes related to deposits. The first was a recommendation from legal to provide a more clear definition of deposit and add a reference to relevant our code for specific items. We also more clearly listed the amounts needed for deposit and added language to clarify that applicants are responsible for actual cost of delivering the service and a deposit is required at the time of application. Changes are proposed for concurrency test fees to replace actual cost with a specific flat fees and deposit amounts. Additional language was also added to clarify fees for batch processing. All of the process rates were developed by the transportation consultant responsible for running the concurrency model fees, concurrency model tests. To better reflect the work being done by both planning and public works department, it is proposed that we divide the clearing grading fees into the appropriate section of the fee schedule. As part of this work, both teams re-reviewed the time and the staffing estimate for clearing grading and made appropriate updates. Five services were identified by staff as being missing from their current fee schedule. We are proposing that these be added in to ensure alignment with our code and to increase transparency to customers around charges they may be responsible for. A few additional proposed changes related to the adoption of the Phase Two Development Regulation Updates. These changes includes three new fees in the clearing grading sections. The first deals with the requirement to have a permit for clearing grading of a smaller areas. The second addresses the permits required for deed removal with site restoration. And finally, there are many, there are many requirements related to the site development permit in the Development Regulation Updates that were missing, and we are adding it on the timeline, as you can see here. We are also proposing updates to the code enforcement penalties, which were updated as part of the Phase Two Development Regulation Updates. To simplify the application process for public, staff proposes to consolidate fees related to three removal to create one three removal fee. This would align with an administrative change to create one three removal application form rather than having four different ones that created confusion for applicants, particularly when multiple forms are required for one landscaping project. And finally, we are proposing to eliminate the existing appeal fee lines and replace them with one appeal fee. This change will ensure consistency with the state requirements and case law and is in line with the land use appeal fees charged by other local jurisdictions. I will now hand it over to the mayor to start the conversation, and I'm happy here to answer any question you might have. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, council, are there questions? Yes, councilmember Howell?
I, I'm just curious, I'm assuming you guys have already kind of run the numbers on this, just to see what the impact is on the budget by this shift? Yes? If you were to just do numbers from prior year and just match it to the new pricing sheet, any significant changes?
I will hand it over to Mewia or David, they could answer this question.
Yeah, so I think there were significant changes from when we did the first update for development review fees. Most of this is pretty minor because it's really just the cost of living increase with, with the exceptions that Sarah called out in the presentation.
Yep, that's what it kind of looked like. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lamb?
Overall, I thought all the numbers looked pretty good. I just had one area that I just wanted some clarification on, and that was for delivery of unsolicited or unsubscribed literature on private property. There are, there's first offense in a one-year period, second offense, and so on. So hypothetically, if somebody was to, say, drop off literature one day and they dropped off something at like 50 homes and some, some resident called in and complained, and then two weeks later, somebody complained for the same thing, is that considered one offense or first offense, or is that considered two offenses? Let's say like 10 people called in over a period of like a month, is that considered 10 offenses?
So I would, yeah, great, great question. So David Pyle, Community Development, I would ask if we could get some assistance from legal on that. That's not one that we considered. If, if, if I was to immediately respond to that, my assessment would be that it would be, each would be an individual case, an individual property, an individual case. However, that's a good question. I don't know how that would play out.
I don't know if we've had a problem like this in the past, so maybe it's not relevant, but.
I think it's a really good question, councilmember Lamb, and because of notice requirements and due process, I would think that regardless of how many deliveries were made in a day, that we would likely have to treat each day as a standalone offense. Again, because of due process and the, the need to provide someone with notice that they have committed a violation, so it would likely be based on a per day scenario rather than per delivery.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, councilmember Lamb, I'm really glad you asked about this because I don't know that we, I mean, I guess it would be interesting to know, have we had any complaints? Have we attempted to enforce this? This is something that's relatively new. It didn't sound like it was much of a problem in the city in the first place. And again, you know, it could be the kid down the street handing out flyers because he wants to, you know, mow lawns for the summer and make some money. And are we really, you know, he handed out 25 of them, are we really going to charge him $2,500 for his first offense? So do we have any information from, I don't know, Mr. City Manager from the city attorney? Have we enforced this ever?
I can speak actually to the code compliance piece of it, since I oversee that division in community development. We have not. We have not received a complaint and we have not pursued that violation.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Moran?
If I may just add, I would say that typically our code compliance is usually focused on education initially, right? So we try to educate people that have violated just so that they understand the code, and hopefully that is where it ends with that education piece. So that is typically where the city starts any code compliance action is just in a, you know, a friendly education-based approach.
Thanks, Carrie.
Councilmember Moran?
I know that this has helped a lot because it's, it was used in our neighborhood where they reminded folks, because we get a lot of flyers, in particular in the summertime, and they reminded people, hey, if you see somebody putting the flyers down, and there was notes that were pinned up on the mailboxes, that they can't be at the end of the driveways, they either have to go into the bins underneath the mailboxes or use the extra energy and put them on the front porch. Just don't leave them to be flying around for trash. And I think it's been really helpful, so, for what it's worth.
Councilmember Stewart, is your hand up again or still up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little confused because I thought I just heard that we hadn't gotten any complaints and we had not done any enforcement, so I'm not sure, I'm understanding what councilmember Moran is referring to.
Just because it didn't make its way to the city didn't mean it didn't make its way to the homeowners association's boards.
Okay, council, so if there are not any more questions, there is a resolution to repeal and replace this master fee schedule, so we would need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved, we need a second? Thank you. So moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven-zero, we have repealed and replaced that.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Our next item is a discussion on the former city manager workplace investigation report. Not really sure which council, I can't recall who added this back on, but. Councilmember Stewart, is your hand up again?
It is, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I move that we release all reports, facts, and findings related to the investigation of former city manager Dave Rudet, with redactions for any identifiable information relating to minors and any city employee names.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I would. In order for there to be trust in government and public institutions, there has to be transparency. For government to truly be of the people, by the people, for the people, the default always has to be that all business is done in the open and all information is shared with the people unless there is a clear and present danger or harm in doing so. Because no one, and not simply because we can find a legal loophole to withhold that information. It's also important to note that while advice from an attorney can be safeguarded via client, attorney-client privilege, facts cannot be. In a presentation created by the state attorney general, open government, it states, open government laws like the OPMA are often called transparency laws or sunshine laws. This is because they shine light on government. And U.S. Supreme Court Justice Brandeis once famously said, "Sunlight is the best disinfectant." We cannot put this issue squarely behind us and move forward with the important business of serving this community until this information is made public and we can move out from under this cloud. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Though I respect the opinion of councilmember Stewart, when you take an oath for the city, your oath is to protect the city. When you are advised by the city attorney that it is not in the best interest of the city.
Point of order.
State your point.
My point is that I don't believe we, it is appropriate for us to be discussing advice from the city attorney that was discussed in executive session on the dais.
I asked for her to be present.
I'm going to ask our city attorney to weigh in here because I don't.
I have to agree that it's not appropriate to divulge legal advice that was received in exec session, in open session. That said, just to clarify for the record, it was someone other than myself that we're referring to, but in any event, I would agree with the point of order brought forward by councilmember Stewart. So if everyone could just be mindful of that, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, your point is taken. Councilmember Moran, you have the floor still.
So though we have been advised, and though we can't talk about whom it came from, but we have been advised, and you have taken an oath that you are to protect the city, it is not in the best interest. So I realize you have the votes, I realize what you're going to do, and, and frankly, that's fine. However, in doing so, you could risk and put the, the city in jeopardy. And that is not okay with me. I will vote no on this because it is our job, whether we like it, whether we don't. But you say this cloud, this cloud didn't exist unless you guys started all up. And when you don't talk about it, it doesn't exist. So whatever floats your boat, whatever you're going to do, you're going to do, but frankly, we need to follow the advice that we are given, or we shouldn't be asking for it. And honestly, if, if we are going to put it out there, then as far as I'm concerned, I, I hope they come after people personally.
Councilmember Lamb?
I support releasing the investigation so that the public will understand why we needed to separate from our former city manager. I also believe very strongly in transparency. Government exists to serve the people, and our residents have been asking for a while for us to release the report. And I think any council member who does not support its release also doesn't support or value openness, does not value transparency and accountability. They are motivated, I believe, in their own self-interest under the guise of safe, under the guise of protecting our city. I look forward to putting this all behind us. Thank you.
Councilmember Howell?
You know, I don't know if this is going to put it behind us per se, because people are going to interpret the information the way that they so choose. And that is their prerogative and their right, and I want to give people their right, their right to the information, their right to make their own decisions, come to their own conclusions, whether they're favorable or unfavorable, whether they, you know, stir people up or what have you. You know, that really, that isn't, that part isn't our job. Our job is to release, to be transparent, to live with the consequences, and figure out how to do a better job, frankly, in the future of being open and transparent in everything that we do so that, frankly, we don't have to have investigations that are in any way kept protected from the public eye. So I apologize to the public that we have not released it sooner, and I look forward to getting this part over with so we can get on to other items that are important for the city. Thank you.
So before we go around two, I will say that I, we released the summary of what is in the work product. And I think the details of it are largely private conversations between two citizens, and I don't know that it does anything to help. And I don't know that it does anything to help the city to release that. So I will be opposed to this. Councilmember Moran.
To have councilmember Lamb say that somebody doesn't value transparency, I find that really offensive, given the fact that this is the same person who revoked the Bluma last week during a study session.
Point of order.
State your point.
This isn't about the Bluma.
Oh, that's right. It's not about the Bluma because it got revoked. I take it back.
Madam Mayor, can you please rule on the point?
Yes, let's just stick to the topic.
Okay, I take back the comment about what the revoked Bluma. So to say that somebody doesn't value transparency is really offensive and is very childish, actually, because the fact of the matter is, is that one thing you're going to learn as you sit in this seat is that your job is to make tough decisions. And your job is not to do what you may hear or see that a group of people want. And just because they want it, they have to have that. Your job is to listen and to listen to all the guidance, whether it be staff, whether it be legal, whatever that guidance is. And I think people are going to be sadly disappointed when this is released because you know what? They think any or all of us have got something in there that's going to be so terrible. We don't. But what is going to happen is that we were advised not to do it. Precedence has been set in the past, and you've just decided that it doesn't matter. So I'm glad you've got a law degree in your back pocket because what you've done is the wrong way to go.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, there's... Sorry, I thought that was councilmember Trin trying to get my attention there. Okay. If there's no further discussion, motion on the floor is to release the report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, the motion is not to just release the report, but it's to release all reports, facts, and findings.
Okay, there you go, with reductions that you previously stated.
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four three, motion passes. All right. Next, we have a presentation. This is on Louis.
I hate to interrupt, I'm sorry, but I'm wondering if, given all of our conversations about transparency, I was reading through some of the OPMA information, and if it wouldn't be in our best interest to maybe have some training for those who haven't recently had training on the OPMA, and possibly even to do a presentation for the public on the OPMA so that we can just get some clarity out there and make sure that we all are clear on the rules so we don't have to step in anything going forward and we can try to make sure we start with a clean slate, so to speak. I don't know if anyone else thinks that might be a good idea, and so we could potentially make a motion.
I think that if I'm not mistaken, that newly elected officials thing has something for OPMA. So the newly elected folks did take something, but I'm not going to speak for them.
I will say that in reading through the OPMA, elected officials, not just newly elected ones, need to have updated training at least every four years. So maybe some of us are due for a refresher. And I don't think it would hurt for the public to get an update on what the OPMA is and what some of the rules are. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we ask the city manager if we could find an appropriate time on the calendar to do a presentation on the OPMA and some of the basic rules.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I kind of feel like I already did. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, councilmember Trin.
Yeah, it sounds like the newly appointed council member could use some OPMA training. So I'll be voting in support of this so that she can get some OPMA training. Thank you.
Point of order.
State your point.
We just really don't need to be directing things at individuals. I think we need to try to create a more collaborative...
You know, if you were elected to the position...
Okay, councilmember Trin, councilmember Stewart, this is not a debate. Stop. Councilmember Trin, stop. Okay.
Go ahead, do your OPMA.
All right, we've got another hand up here, but we've got a motion on the floor, folks. So councilmember Lamb... Oh, your hand is down. Okay, councilmember Trin, did you have something else to know? Okay. Motion on the floor is for... Can I get some clarification? Because I'm not sure if this is a standalone workshop or if you just want an item embedded in an upcoming agenda.
It can be in an upcoming agenda, please.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I think that was a seven oh vote. All right. Next, presentation. Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Preferred Non-Motorized Alternative. Turning this over to Audrey Starcy, Jed Ireland, and Jeff Ellicash, among others.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I am Audrey Starcy, Deputy Public Works Director. This evening, we plan to present alternatives for the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project. Jed Ireland, our senior project engineer, Doug Van Gelder, a city engineer, and Maria Brocki with Cosmo Consulting will be presenting this evening. With that, I will turn it over to Jed and team.
Thanks, Audrey. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I will share my screen for the slideshow presentation. Okay, so hopefully that's visible now. This is our follow-up on the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project. The background is that this project was listed as a priority project in the Zachuse Basin Plan in 2018. And so these are the limits of the corridor. The corridor actually, in the Zachuse Basin Plan, was from 205th up the hill to 210th Place Southeast. But what we're showing right now is a possibility of including the limits all the way to the Parkway, and which that'll become clear why as we get into the presentation. The project goals are really to resolve stormwater issues, improves water quality, reduce erosion in the ditches, and improvements in the existing outfalls. But in addition to that, because of the improvements that we're doing, there's kind of a nexus to, is this an opportunity for us to consider building non-motorized improvements? And then going into the alternatives, there were four alternatives that we're looking at. These were ones that council looked at March 8th and had some feedback. And so we went ahead and shared that with the public. We had a virtual open house on May 5th to get feedback from the public. And we also had a online survey connected from our website where people could drop pins or make comments based on the different features. And so we're going to give that summary. Alternative one, which council has seen before, that we proposed, would be the stormwater only. This would address the basic project of the Zachuse Basin Plan. And the costs are slightly different. They're a little bit lower, a little bit more than a million dollars lower for each alternative. But relatively speaking, the costs go up as we add features. So alternative one is 3.7 million. Alternative two then would add sidewalk, but it would eliminate the shoulder. And so it would eliminate a little bit of the impacts in the construction and the stormwater requirements. And therefore, it'd be a less expensive option than others. It's 4.66 million. We also heard from council to consider doing something like a rumble strip. And what we're proposing would be a thermoplastic profiled plastic line, which would alert drivers when they're leaving the travel lane and getting into the shoulder on the uphill lane. It's only $20,000, so not a big upgrade for price. Alternative four would then be adding a bike lane where the existing shoulder is. The cost for this one is 6.9 million. Part of the reason is, is that there's additional stormwater treatment and detention that's required for this feature. And we'll also see that this seems to be the alternative that the public came back with. It matches our road standard for the most part, except for the planter strip. And this seems to be the one that got the most positive feedback. Alternative five would be doing mostly our road section, which would include a five-foot planter strip. And this one is estimated at 8.9 million. Just to summarize the feedback, alternative four was most compatible with the feedback. The sidewalk was topping the list of what people wanted, but then bike lanes were a close second. There was some positive feedback also about the plastic fog line in the uphill direction. Just a couple notes in there is that what we heard from very experienced bicyclists, what were identified in the transportation master plan or wash dot as fearless bicyclists, these are the ones that wear the tightest pants and they commute to work daily. They would just take a lane. They don't necessarily need a bike lane on a road with 8% grade like this because they can go very fast. And so their experience would be, they would prefer to have a little bit more width on the uphill lane. Now, of course, in our alternatives, we're limiting the improvements to one side to save costs. But, you know, widening the shoulder on the, why we did this project would be an opportunity that we could explore as well. There was some alternative five comments. People liked it because they liked the idea of the planter strips, the separation that it provided, even the idea of a planter strip separating bike lanes from the sidewalk. And the reason we're not going to recommend that in this case is, number one, it didn't get the most feedback because of the cost primarily, but also because there's a lot of tree canopy here. We probably don't need to add shrubs or street trees in this zone. And then also the steep slopes and driveways and things like that, it would make it hard to add the additional width and the impacts it would have to people's driveways and the intersections and sight distance. Here's the online survey. This is a little bit updated from what was in the packet on Friday or last week because the survey was still going on through Friday. And so you can see that alternative four got the most outright votes in this pie chart. Alternative three did pretty well, and alternative five, they had a similar number of votes percentage-wise. However, alternative five really includes, it includes bike lane and sidewalk interest too. And you can see that on the right side, question one was related to how do you rank the different improvements? You can see that sidewalks and bike lanes, if you look at the red, the green, and the yellow, about the most important or the more important, bike lanes and sidewalks are far and away, you know, considered to be critical for this corridor compared to landscape strips. And then rumble strips also had some positive response as well. During the virtual open house, we also did a, I think it's called a mentee survey. And so there were some quick updates that people could give on the fly right there during the meeting. And we can see that sidewalks were a big priority. Also, in another question, people rated the alternatives. And at this meeting as well, you can see the 11 dots are focused on alternative four. So just high-level considerations, I just want to emphasize, keeping improvements to one side reduces potential costs. The uphill shoulder improvements, there are some areas, particularly between 208th and 210th Avenue Southeast, where the shoulder is somewhere around three feet or less, over about 350-foot long area. That's something that we could, it's potential that we could address that as part of this project so that the uphill lanes also have the width for bicyclists. The tree impacts with the widening, alternative five has the most impacts by far. Alternative four would have some tree impacts, but it would be thinning out a tree here and there rather than removing whole blocks of trees. So I wouldn't, I don't recommend that tree impacts would be a huge consideration for selecting alternative four. Right-of-way impacts, this road, as some old roads have been, were done. They were built outside of the right-of-way in a few corners between 208th and 210th, or excuse me, 210th Place Southeast and 210th Avenue Northeast, which is further south. And so anything that we did in that area, we just have to clean that up. But generally, the improvements would fit within, inside the right-of-way. There would be some temporary encroachments needed to redo residential driveways that have steep grades in most of the, in alternatives four and five. I would also say that Inglewood Hill Road was a stormwater project that included non-motorized features. It was largely built similarly to option four that was shared with the residents in the survey. In addition, it is compatible, it's most compatible with the Trails and Bike Ways paths plan that we had in 2004, and then also the draft 2020 Transportation Master Plan. It's compatible with the plans that we have, that we have had. And just noting again, the cost estimates are slightly reduced over what was shared with the public just because we had a little bit more information as the design progressed. This is showing an exhibit in the highlighted area here. The King County Parks will be building a ramp down from the intersection at the base of Lewis Thompson Road onto East Lake Somannus Trail. So there was, and so this was some of the reason why we're considering adding that extra few hundred feet to connect 205th to East Lake Somannus Parkway with non-motorized features. So there'd be a connection to that trail connection. That phase is going to start for King County in June, and it's meant to be constructed by the end of 2023 is their target. Now, in your packet of materials, there was this alternative evaluation matrix. It's a little bit detailed to get into right here, but I want to highlight a few items. Work on private property. I would say that alternatives four and five, they're colored in red or pink, partly because just by doing that additional widening will be impacting some of the driveways. And so people's driveways will have to be impacted. There's probably four that exceed 15% that come off the road. And so that'll be something that has to be addressed with alternatives four and five. But again, alternative four has less width than alternative five, so it's a better situation than five. The construction cost is obvious. Four and five are the most expensive, and so they're red. Trees impacted, alternative four has some trees impacted, but it's a relative thinning of a tree here and there. It doesn't get rid of whole swaths of trees as much as alternative five would do south of 208th. And then power poles would largely remain as they are, although alternative five would just mean they have to be relocated. And so that would introduce some rest that we would have to partner with the utilities to relocate all the poles on the corridor. Maintenance needs, of course, adding sidewalk is going to require some maintenance. But by eliminating the planter strip of alternative five, that, you know, that would have the most maintenance out of all the options. Quick project timeline, you can see here that we're, in quarter three of this year, we'll be looking at a second public meeting. After meeting with council of the 30% design, we would do another open house to share the design with the public. And also, construction would take place mostly in 2024. Next steps, what we're asking is for council to select their preferred alternative. We would take one of the alternatives to a 30% design with detailed cost estimates. There wouldn't be a budget impact yet at this point because we are currently funded through 30% design with the current contract. However, when we come back to council in the summer, we'd be looking at the more detailed cost estimates. And there would be an opportunity at that time to look at value engineering or to make the project into discrete pieces that were more manageable. However, just from a stormwater perspective, there's no practical reason to break the project into smaller segments. All the stormwater improvements are needed. It would just really be a budgeting tool if we were to break it up or make it into discrete projects. So staff would be recommending that we would pick the alternative we want and just go forward and build it as such as the desired length of the project, the whole length. So at that 30%, then that would inform, what does, that would confirm the estimate that we would have and what budget we would need, and therefore, the new funding would be requested in the 23, 24 biennium. And with that, that's the end of the slides, and so we're ready to take questions.
Okay, council, questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Jed. I'm super excited about this project. I think especially with the last piece of the trail kicking off, connecting to that trail safely is awesome. One question I have, though, is an alternative four... One question I have though is in alternative four, will the shoulder on the uphill side be five feet everywhere? At least five feet, I should say. At least five feet everywhere.
We haven't shown that it is on, on these examples. However, that is something that with council's direction, we could look at doing that and pursuing that for the 30% design. Right now, there's about 700 feet where it varies a little bit. Part of it is a section of guard rail that might have to be relocated because it's less than five feet. And by guard rail, you'd want to have five feet ideally would be the standard. There's also a 350-foot section that it drops around three feet. And that's something that we'd want to add width there. So those are things that we could address. Those are things that bikers in the uphill lane are facing now. And this might be a time for us to address those.
Okay, and then down at the intersection itself, we would have bike lanes and shoulder width down there for bikers so that they can safely get on to Tompkins Hill Road?
Correct, yes. Yes, and then we're, that's an option. Of course, we don't need to decide that today. But at the 30%, we would be then proposing to add the full length. We'd be confirming the length at that time this summer that we would connect to the intersection.
Okay, because I mean, it's really exciting that the like superbikers can bike up that hill in the traffic, but most normal humans can't. And so I think that having, having safe space for bikers on the uphill side has to be a priority even over having a five-foot bike lane on the downhill side. That would be just kind of my input there that, you know, if you're going, for normal, you know, recreation bikers, you've got to have that width, especially because it's so curvy. And it is pretty steep for, for the non-superhuman biker. So I would, I would love to see us have at least five feet on, on that, on the uphill side because it can get pretty wobbly when you're riding up that hill. So that would just be, I guess, something we can look at when we get to the 30% design and make additional trade-offs. Is that, would that be correct or if we needed to?
Yes, and if, but if there was consensus, of course, we could look at that and have that prepared as part of the 30%. We would just have to negotiate an additional task if that's required under our contract.
And why would we make a bike, an official bike lane on the downhill side, but not on the uphill side?
It's really, it's because where we're focusing, the storm improvements are on the, what I'm calling the north side of that road. And so it just makes sense that that's where the improvements and the road cutting is. And it's really cost that prevents us from building all the improvements on both sides. In addition, the, the guard rail that we have, it's not compatible with an officially official bike lane with Legends because then you'd have to provide fall protection. And so the bike, we would have to repurpose and replace all of the guard rail. And in practice, the guard rail may not be an obstacle or a safety issue for bicyclists. But once you make it a bike lane, you'd have to look at that and put up more fencing, fall protection. And that would be a consideration for the aesthetics of the corridor as well. And then whether that was even needed.
All right, well, just, just my, my personal input would be that I think we, we need to prioritize enough space to reasonably ride uphill, even if that meant sacrificing the bike lane on the downhill side. But otherwise, definitely like option four or alternative four. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. First of all, thanks so much for your hard work on this. This great presentation is so clear, which I appreciate. And what I would love to know is probably something you can't tell me, which is I'll bet that your, your survey and your outreach and so forth has all been anonymous. But I'd love to know of the four driveways that are going to be impacted. Were any of those four people part of this process in terms of getting input? Because I just want to try to understand too, like if, if we impact their driveway, is that a financial impact that we don't understand or comprehend in some way? Because I just, I just, I don't know how severe it is. And I was really optimistic. You could tell me, oh yeah, those four people, they totally love, you know, option four and are with you on that one. But you probably can't tell me.
I don't know if they're, if they're fully with us on this one. I've talked to people who have private drives or, excuse me, private streets that are steep and, but they didn't specifically mention that issue. It was more, but they did talk about sight distance issues and things like that. What I can tell you is that there's no getting around the fact that driveways are very personal and they're difficult. And so the changes are going to be painful, but it's something that we'll have to carefully consider and design with their feedback as, you know, part of the process. It won't be easy, but it's something that we can do.
And it's, okay, so it looks like some mitigation might be coming in here. And, and, and the safety, just making sure people can get in and out of their driveways in one piece and stuff like that, which I know you'll already build into that. I, I like the design for option number four as well. I realize it's more expensive. I understand councilmember Stewart's point about more space on the, for an uphill, you know, trudge with your bike, but disagree with moving it, the bike lane. I think the bike lane needs to stay right where it is. If that makes sense.
Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Jed. For bike lanes that have both directions, do you have to add like an additional five feet? So it needs to be 10 feet total? Not that I would necessarily want to meet a cyclist coming down the hill quickly, but just curious if you would need, you know, to double that to make it both directions or if you know?
So if I understand the, the question, the reason that adding bike lanes on the north side is easy is because essentially that's, there's already shoulder there and the ditch is where the sidewalk is going. If we go, if we were to keep the center line of the road and to extend the bike lane on the uphill section, you're basically going over the cliff. And so that's why it would be very difficult to build on that side. It's, it's somewhat cost prohibitive.
Sorry, I didn't mean building on that side. I meant where your bike lane is, can you make it two-directional? Or would you need to make, you know, an additional five feet to double it? Like where the existing?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, yes. No, I understand the question. No, I truly understand. Yes, you could double it. You could be doing a shared use path. And we did look at that. However, the guidance is that the shared use path is very difficult. For one, you don't have the ridership yet. That would, you just don't have enough homes. You don't have enough destination areas, although the trail will be one. Number two, you have steep grades that are approaching the multi-use trail. So sight distance is already an issue. It's very difficult to have two-way traffic shared with pedestrians and bikes. And, and then the driveways that are coming out because people are not expecting the speeds, you know. So it's, there's an advantage to keeping the bikes with the lane of traffic. And so a shared use path, like a 10-foot lane for bikes, it's, it's just not typical in an area that's constrained like this with steep grids.
Councilmember Lamb?
Hi Jed. I had a couple of questions. And the first one's on grant funding. So maybe this is a question for the interim city manager. It says that 2.9 million is coming from ARPA. Is that out of the 4.5 that's left in the bucket?
I can respond to that. The 2.9 million is ARPA. The, the 4.5 bucket, what I'm saying, there's a $3.5 million bucket that's funding this project. We have $3.5 million in grants. And the 2.91 is the American Rescue Plan Act for stormwater, specifically for the stormwater components. And then we, the additional is from King County Flood Control District. And it's from two different grant sources from, from that agency. Does that, does that answer the question? So the 3.5 million is what I had in the packet, but I don't, I don't know if that, if that relates to the 4.5 million or if that was another, another figure that I'm not familiar with.
Oh, I just have a, a spreadsheet which shows what's left in our ARPA, how much we have left, which is 4.5 million. And I just wasn't sure if that was coming out of that budget.
Oh, I see.
And if so, like I'm not sure how we decide that this project is going to utilize ARPA funds versus some other project.
If I understand correctly, this, these ARPA funds are earmarked for this project. And there was other ARPA funds that were earmarked for other city functions. And so I, I don't know that this is robbing from another program if it was used on this project. But maybe someone else could speak to the, to the rest of the ARPA grants. I'm not familiar with the requirements of the rest of the ARPA grant.
I can, I can add a little bit to that. You are correct, there are two different funding, funding buckets. So this was a appropriation that was allocated specifically to this project, completely separate than the, the larger, the 4.5 ARPA.
Okay, so I didn't hear clearly. So it is, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I also prefer alternative four. I had a question about the rumble strips. Why, like, why are we deciding to put rumble strips in?
The last council meeting, I think when we came in March 8th, we were asked to include that. I think regarding specifics, recommendations from council members. And so we looked at that, you know, traditional rumble strips you might see in a center line, they're grooves into a state highway. We're not proposing that. We don't want to put that near bikers. And traditionally, those go outside of striping. And so that would further constrain the shoulder in the uphill direction. And so these, this profiled plastic, it's four inches wide, which is the existing width of our fog line. It's something that wouldn't take up any extra room, but it would provide the same desired effect. It could be swept and it wouldn't restrict the bikers in any way or take any extra room from them. And so that's why we're proposing it. Is that it, with the idea that some drivers are cutting corners, this would alert them that they're, they're leaving the travel lane.
So do they bump up? Like, is there a height to them?
Yeah, yup, there's a little bit of a height to them. So they're basically like a thermoplastic sticker. Now, I don't think we actually have installations of these in the city. So we've asked around for maintenance issues and things like that. So it would be maybe a novel use for us, but it is a product that's out there and that is the standard washed-up product.
So I guess, have we asked bikers whether or not, you know, they, whether or not they prefer not to have these rumble strips? Because I'm just thinking unless there's, unless this area is prone to crashes, and I don't know if we have that data, like, you know, I think the purpose of rumble strips is like to wake people up, like inattentive drivers. So if we already have a sidewalk, then, you know, the only people that we're actually considering are the bikers. And if there's debris on the shoulder, then that would force the bikers to go on the other side of the rumble strip as opposed to like just being on that white line. And to me, that would cause, like, that would be a more dangerous situation. So I guess, you know, have we asked the bikers whether or not they prefer not to have the rumble strips? And also, is there a noise issue? You know, when the cars go over them? And also, you know, the more I think about it, like the, the rumble strips, a car would actually have to go over the rumble strips before they self-correct. And at that point, they've already hit the bicyclist. So I'm not quite clear on the purpose of the rumble strips.
To address whether bikers, bikers did have the opportunity to understand what we were proposing because it was on the slideshow. We highlighted it. I don't recall a lot of feedback specifically about the, the rumble strips that we proposed, although I did get some feedback that people don't like the idea of the grooved rumble strips like they're used to seeing, like on Highway 202. They don't, they don't want those. You know, potentially that's something we could highlight. Again, it's an application, doesn't really affect the geometry of the road. It's something we could decide later on and we could highlight, you know, further, like at the 30% design at our next open house, if that was what the council desired.
So I do prefer alternative four, but I would caveat that with getting more information on the rumble strips.
And whether or not that's necessary. Thanks.
Okay, before we dive into round two, I'm going to throw some comments in here. And just listening to some of the comments too, I am favorable to alternative four, but I am a staunch proponent of having the rumble strips. Several other jurisdictions utilize them. And I think the, the noise is fairly minimal. There's more noise inside your vehicle than there is outside of the vehicle. But the point of them is to alert drivers. And I think the idea is that a driver would, in theory, hit a rumble strip, wake, you know, get their attention that they need to be back in their travel lane prior to hitting a cyclist. But the, the reality is, is the rumble strips are going on the opposite side of the street where there is no like literal bike lane in alternative four. And I think it is conceivable that you will have pedestrians over there too. I know there's a sidewalk going in, but there are people that live off of those side streets and there will still be pedestrians over there. I think it's important from a public safety standpoint that we try to provide something there because there's nothing else. There's no, there's no curb for protection. And I think most people that traverse Lewis Thompson probably live in Somamish. And you're going to learn really quick that you don't like to make that sound on, on Lewis Thompson. And for those not familiar with driving it, hopefully it will be a deterrent for crossing over the fog line. But as somebody who has gone up and down that street before, people cross the fog line all the time. And it's really important from a protection standpoint for both cyclists and pedestrians that might be on that, that side of the road. I think that, that piece is, is very important for safety. All right, so round two. Councilmember Stewart? Nope, okay, sorry. Nope, Councilmember Trine?
So I, I agree with Mary Victor, who gave us public comment that alternative three is the best option on Lewis Thompson with the north side sidewalk, bike lane on the south side. I like what Mayor Mao Chow's saying with the rumble strip as, as a cyclist, someone who does ride fast downhill and struggles to go uphill, the rumble strip's a good thing. Five feet would be nice all the way up. Also fully aware and understand that there's going to be a challenge with the intersection when we get down there. But I think at a 30%, let's move forward. And if staff is correct, if this is the project that we want to, that they would like to just make a decision on a move forward to completion, alternative three has the least amount of environmental impact.[1648.61] three has the least amount of environmental impact. And so, as your chart showed there, Mr. Ireland, thank you for that. It seems that that one would be the most sustainable, cost efficient, and also meets all the criteria and needs of the community. So alternative three is definitely the alternative that I'd prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine. Councilmember Stewart?
No, Councilmember Moran has her hand up.
I don't even see Councilmember Moran on my screen.
Well, her hand is up on my screen.
Okay. It's, all I see is cameras, so, because she doesn't have a camera, and that's it. I can't see her. So I apologize. Councilmember Moran.
I say the same thing that Councilmember Trine did. And I agree with Mary Victor on this one. I go with, with number three. And with some aspects of number four, I think it's environmentally the best option. I like the rumble strip for, you know, if you put values on human life, I guess it's a good option. And I like the, the fact that it's environmental. And frankly, if we had all the money in the world, I'd take option five, but we don't. So I think option three is really a very good alternative. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. So I appreciate Councilmember Lamb's concerns, but also share the concerns of, you know, drivers not staying in their lanes. Jed, I'm wondering, as we go into the 30% design, if we can get some information. One of my concerns about the adhesive rumble strips, I've done a number of the, you know, walk, pick up trash on roads in Sammamish. And the most common piece of trash that we pick up are the, the reflectors. So I don't know if the rumble strips would stay on any better than the reflectors. So I'm wondering, as you guys do the 30% design, if you can get some information, maybe from other jurisdictions, if they have either trouble with those rumble strips with snowplows or anything, do they stay on? Or if there are other ways to achieve the same goal, right, which is to have that alert to the drivers, so that we encourage them not to cross, cross the, the line, but don't end up with, you know, we put them down as trash after the first snowplow. That would just be my, you know, maybe something we can investigate during that design. But I know we give you the impossible task. Don't spend any money. Make the lanes really wide. Make them super safe, but don't put anything on the road. So if, if you can just do that, Jed, it'll be fine.
We can certainly investigate it. We, yeah, we'll, we'll chase that down. Also, I'm confused. Two of the council members had mentioned option, alternative three. I thought Mary Victor had picked up alternative four. Are we all talking about alternative four, or was there a discussion about alternative three?
In Mary Victor's public comment tonight, it was alternative three. So if she changed her mind, that's fine, but.
I may have misheard. I thought she said alternative four. I believe her comment in the survey was alternative four.
She, she talked about alternative four, but she said three was the one to be looking at, and then look at the speed limit, to set the speed limit at a lower number.
Okay. So, real quick, in consideration of kind of how those numbers fell as well, and listening to some of my fellow councilmembers, I actually do think alternative three is probably better, not only from a cost perspective, but as I, as I went back and thought about my own thoughts that I had expressed earlier, that the cyclists are likely not going to stay in a bike lane on the downhill. They are going to go into the travel lane. I, I watched this, the cyclists aren't even down on the East Lake Sammamish Trail. They're up on the parkway. Even though we just paved it, they're up on the, so they are not going to likely, because they're going to be on the downhill, and it's very fast, they're going to probably be in the travel lane. And I think we'd be putting down asphalt for no other reason other than to have them be in the travel lane anyway. So. Councilmember Moran.
The bikes that go downhill on that, on that particular hill, they beat me down the hill. They're not going, you know, 25, 35. They're, I mean, they beat me down the hill. So they're not going to be in the bike lane, that I can tell. So I agree with you on that. Then the, as far as I know, and, you know, unless this has changed from when you take driving tests, but in, in a city where it, city speed limits are 25 unless posted otherwise. And so wouldn't that road be 25 miles an hour unless posted otherwise?
It is posted otherwise.
I believe, I believe it's posted 35.
Up the hill it is, but not on the, not on the hill.
Mm-hmm. There's a speed limit sign on the bottom of the hill, as you go up.
I'll have to look. I don't know if there's a speed limit sign on the bottom of that hill.
Okay. Councilmember Lamb.
So I do think that alternative four, because it does have that bike lane next to the, next to the sidewalk, I do think that additional five feet would benefit the people, the cyclists going downhill, because there are blind spots, and that just gives them a little extra space to be a little bit more on the right of a car that's also like barreling down the road. If not, they are straight, you know, in the middle of traffic. So, you know, I understand that, you know, if we're gonna put rumble strips, you know, to protect the bicyclists going up, why wouldn't we give them the extra five feet on the downhill side?
Councilmember Moran, do you have another comment?
Yeah. I, I mean, I appreciate the, the ideas that, that everyone's throwing around. Jed, in, in, in looking at, you know, the, the comments and feedback that you got, was there, was there any particular discussion about the bike lane on the downhill side? And whether people wanted that, whether people were concerned about that? I, I can say that, you know, again, the experienced bicyclists are gonna ride fast enough on that road that it's probably not gonna much matter. But when you're riding with your family, which we've done often, and we, we live off of that road, that, you know, with a, with a kid, it's a little scarier to be in the street, even on the downhill side, just because you don't really want to encourage them to go faster than they're comfortable. And cars in Sammamish are not very patient, so they generally don't stay behind you and wait. They're gonna pass you, and that's a very dangerous road for people to be crossing the double yellow line. So I'm just curious what, what that feedback was on the downhill bike lane.
Okay, so the, the feedback was a little bit nuanced, because the superheroes, the fearless category, which, it's, it's kind of a thing, right? It's the, it's the washed out standard, and our TMP also did that, the Transportation Master Plan. They might take a lane. They're comfortable taking a lane and doing it. And right now, that's probably mostly what you have on that corridor, people that are hardcore commuters, because there's not an easy way to get down to the trail. You're biking on East Lake Sammamish Parkway with narrow shoulders, relatively high speeds. In a way, because this is not as steep as Inglewood or some other corridors, away as off the plateau, you're gonna get what's called, you might get a different type of biker that's below fearless, and they're called confident. And they might be older kids, they might be people who want to recreate or, or are new to commuting on the trail. Those are the people that might use a bike lane in the downhill. They may not be comfortable with that. I'd also point out that because of the, the corners and things like that, we probably couldn't get away with exactly an 11-foot lane up against a curb. So the five feet also provides the movements for trucking and vehicles and buses and things like that. So I think, I would, I would say there's no reason to go away from our standard. I think from our polling of the public, our standard is a good one. But getting rid of the planner strip is a good choice. It confirms the public's opinion. And actually, I got an email from Mary Victor that she's, she's clarifying that she's for alternative four.
Okay. Well, I, I would say that, you know, as a, as a family that for many, many years biked, and I biked up that hill with, with little kids, who, whether they were confident or not, we biked up and down that hill. And I do think, once there's a connection to the trail and that intersection is corrected, you might find more people biking on it, because that is the easiest way on and off the plateau, on all the, on all the bike routes. So if anybody's gonna try biking up and down the, the plateau, that's gonna be the, the choice once we make these improvements. So I'm gonna stick with alternative four, but I'm gonna reemphasize that I really do think we have to have five feet on the uphill side, and that I would like to see that in 30% design. Thanks.
Okay. I just did a quick drive up and down Lewis Thompson here. So there is a 35 mile an hour speed limit at the bottom as you're driving up. There is no speed limit sign anywhere from Southeast 8th all the way to the bottom. So I don't know where the latest speed limit sign is. Maybe it's before Southeast 8th on 212th, but there's no speed limit sign. So everybody can just drive it like it's a freeway tomorrow. Or not. Okay. All right. We probably need a motion for direction for a finalized. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we direct the interim city manager to have staff take alternative four to the 30% design, and include estimates for making the uphill side five feet all the way up, even though it won't be an official bike lane.
I'll second. Okay, it's been seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just, just in summary, really appreciate all of the work that you did and all the input you got. It sounds like the community is very much in favor of alternative four. We've gotten some feedback from folks who have been, you know, paying a lot of attention to this road and the work that needs to be done there. And they're also very much in favor of alternative four. And I think that with the, the trail being completed and a connection to the trail, I think this will be a huge asset to our community, and we should look to making it safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, both downhill and uphill. So appreciate that.
I don't see any more hands. I'll just make the quick comment. I could, like, live with alternative four, although I still preference alternative three, to the tune of saving $2.2 million and probably having all the cyclists in the travel lane anyway. So I'll be voting against it, but it'll be fine either way. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Okay, by vote of 4-2, motion passes. So direction is for alternative four.
4-2, 5-2, 4-3?
5-2, sorry. It's, I'm so used to six, sorry. All right. Council reports. Does anyone have a council report?
Okay, council reports. Mr. City Manager, do you have a city manager's report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just have a quick one. There was council request to add a land acknowledgement as part of our council meeting process. And so my recommendation to you all, as I'm looking for a little direction here, is that we work with, so call me tribe, to come up with appropriate language, and then we'll circulate that with all of you. And then if that works for everyone, then we would suggest that at the first meeting of every month, we make a land acknowledgement as part of the council meeting process. So if that works for everyone, I'm kind of looking for head nods if that process works for everyone.
I think you're saying-
Then, I'll, staff will move forward on that. Excuse me, and we'll bring back language. My sense is that we could for sure have that ready for the June 7th council meeting.
Sounds good. Councilmember Lamb?
My only concern about having it once a month is for those people who don't tune in to watch every council meeting. If you don't happen to catch that one, then you won't see them. So I, you know, maybe we cross that bridge when we get to it, and we just, you know, think about, is it, is once a month appropriate, or every council meeting?
So I think, in consideration that the city manager is going to be speaking with the tribe and working with the tribe, I think we can probably work through those nuances.
Absolutely, Mayor. And I would just follow to say that, you know, we're happy to deal with whatever the direction of council is. It's essentially, it's, it's all of your collective decisions. So we will, we will accommodate whatever the final decision is.
Anything additional, or is that it?
Sorry, Maria, that's everything. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Mayor Mauchow, you had sent out information about the riot eight, and I didn't know if you needed any input on the voting for the grant funding on that.
I essentially just asked if you had an issue with it, to raise it. So do you have an issue with the grant fund? Oh, okay.
I do not.
All righty.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Motion on the floor.
Okay. There is a motion to adjourn, and I believe it was seconded, although I have no idea by whom at this point. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. By vote of 7-0, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.